To keep from wearing my knees out when I'm standing, I'll just call them leaving to order. Would you please stand before the invocation and remain standing for all the prayers and the holy people here? Our God, we thank you for this day and the you hand your word that we've been a part of and enjoyed it, and we thank you that this is the day that the Lord has made your choice and be led in it. We ask now for wisdom in every decision and every debate across the table, let us be kind of affection one to one another, let us consider each opinion, and it's honor waits. We all show these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Attention, so we pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had an opportunity to choose the agenda?
Yes.
Is there any additions or corrections? It's your responsibility to motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make no motion.
No more.
Not that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? How you voting for that?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
And she is. Okay. On agenda, Dr. John Sam, we do very engineer, good news, loss of news.
Sorry, my brain, I just had a brain lapse or whatever you want to call it. No, the reason I'm here today, it obviously just kind of catching up on some of our projects, but out at well pump number two, it is, I think the grant calls for a submersible pump, which I don't know if you know the definition of what that means, but a submersible is obviously everything's underground, and that's what the town wanted. I'm sorry, I mean not what the town wanted, but that's what was put in agreement. I think you're well, this is well two that we're replacing, and well three is a submersible pump. But what you currently have out there, and it's kind of funny because I can't think of the name of a trend, it starts with a T, but it has lost my mind, and I cannot think of the type of pumps out there, but what it is, above ground. I cannot think of the name of it, but it starts with a T, and it'll come to me in a minute, but it's just latched me right now. But it's all above ground, and it's a little bit louder, you know, and it's, it makes more noise, but it's in a block wall building. And I come to you, the reason I'm coming to you is asking, is the town set, you know, the grant asked or required us to put back a submersible, but it's going to cause more issues in terms of financially constraint, and there's just going to be more to it to swap from what you currently have to go to the submersible wood you originally put the application. Is there preference? To me, there's, to me, it's easier to fix the one that you currently have now because it's above ground. If it's submersible, you got to sit there and pull everything up to fix the parts. I mean, it's all underground. And a submersible, the benefits of having one is, A, the noise, which you have, that yours is in a block confined building, so there's no real threat there to make a lot of noise unless that was just astronomical when you've had complaints. Or two, if you're in a flood zone and you need it to be underwater because you don't want the water to rise and foul up the pump that's above ground, which you're not in that either, you're not in a flood zone there, so you're not going to have that issue. So my, my goal is to kind of replace what's there, like for like, and not go to a submersible pump unless that's the wishes of the commission. I don't think DEO is going to care one way or the other, we just need to tell them, but I, I mean, you know, Lynn and I talked, and I can't do it without y'all, you know, without y'all's permission or approval, you know, without y'all's consent to do that.
Is number two one of the, or?
Positatus.
Sorry, yes, the well number two, positatus, I'm sorry, I should have led to that.
That's only two for my minutes now. The grant calls for submersible, but we have a bug.
The one that's there is a vertical turbine. That's what the turbine, the vertical turbine is what, it just left me now to come back. So what you currently have is a vertical turbine pump, and the grant asked to go to a submersible, and I think the only reason you did that was because your well three was submersible, so y'all mentioned, hey, let's just get the same well two. But swapping from a vertical turbine to a submersible is going to be, I'm just afraid it's going to put us over our budget. If you want to be blunt, it's going to put us over the $360,000 they gave us, I think, to do, to replace that pump and associate our piping from the pump to the tower. I think that change is going to really, it could drive us past the budget. And I think going back with like for like will be a simple replacement and not drive that cost over our budget.
Can we do that with, it already been in the grant?
We'd have to get around, yeah, but that's what you said.
Yeah, we'll just have to go back and tell DEO, hey, you know, what's there is a, is a vertical turbine, and that's what we want to go back with as opposed to a submersible. And I've even done a little bit of research, because the pros and cons to the naturalized, not really any, there's no one that's better than the other, with a block wall there and you're not a flood zone. If you were in a flood zone, if you're putting a well in, the deal is, is get a submersible, and it's all underwater, so it doesn't matter anyway. If it floods, you're fine, but you don't have to worry, the problem, and that's, that's never going to flood, and it's in a block wall, so the noise above, and the submersible does it, it's not as loud, there's, there's no noise essentially because it's underground. So this one will cause noise, but with a block wall around it, it contains most of that, that noise. And you're several, several hundred feet away from the closest house, which I don't know that distance, but it's a pretty good piece from, have there been any complaints from, from the neighbors there of noise at that, at that well? And just in the past, I'm just curious.
No.
And I thought maybe that's what drove, hey, let's go to a submersible, then I actually dug up on Oculus, your permitted wells through Oculus through D P, and realized that your well three was submersible, so maybe y'all just said, hey, let's do the same there and do it in well two. But there's no real value in it, if you want my opinion, of doing one or the other.
Did you call Mr. Register?
So I, I talked to him, I just want to get their wishes, and then I think maybe me and you and Mr. Register can have a conversation once I just get their approval, if they're, if they're willing to do that.
Sound really relations.
I'm not leaving the lot with the bug ring.
How long has a bug been in service? I mean, the one where?
I don't remember the same, but it's been bug red, it was just way.
It's easier to get to plant.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
It's, it's the only thing that a vertical turbine that you have now that's underground is there's a propeller, and it can go out, but I've even done research on that, and it's like, what did, what did it say? And I don't want to butcher it, because it's like every problem you, every problem you could have on your vertical turbine or your submersible, that that propeller is only like one in every five, meaning you could have five hiccups where your submersible, you got to pull it out, that propeller, it just, lightning could hit it and knock that propeller out, and you got to pull it up and do it, but the odds of that happening aren't as great as it is with a submersible or with a vertical turbine hitting something above the ground. The odds of that going out, there'll be more problems above it, you know, above ground where your vertical turbine is in that one, that building, that will be the propeller going out at the bottom, pushing the water up.
In your opinion, or in other locations, anything like that, is either one of them more?
I think.
More protected, more safe?
No, I actually think more people have used the vertical turbines than they do the submersible. Which is what, I mean, again, which is what you have there now.
Submersible, submersible kind of cornered market for a long time, and then it's a lot of, in residential, it's going to a lot of submersible, but.
That's not true.
Let's talk about, let's re-talk about if they, if they equal, let's re-talk about what the, what the situation, what's the cost difference?
I, I haven't done, I mean, I would have to be bid out to know that exact number, and I can maybe try to give you an engineering estimate on that, I haven't ran that number, I just know there's significant changes that we need to take place that's there now to go to a submersible, since you have a vertical turbine, but I don't know the exact cost, but I can get that easily and let you know.
But is that the turbine that's going to be this tracing?
I think since, since what you have currently, yes, positatus, yes, sir, it would definitely be less expensive.
You said, like, you're talking about the site thing, the site thing, to make a change of it?
Yeah, I said that again, I didn't.
You said there was some other things had to be done, or you're talking about the site?
Yeah, if you change from what you have now to go to a submersible, there's going to be controls, panels, the whole nine yards will have to be updated above ground, where what you have now, let's just replace the pump, put a new one in, hook up to what you got, and you're fine. I don't know the exact dollar amount, but it's, it's a pretty significant dollar amount.
I'm concerned with the council is, if we're going, if we're not, if we're not going to have enough money to do the submersible, and we'll have enough money to do the standard, that, that kind of makes my mind.
Makes my mind.
Makes my mind.
I think we have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion that we petition D O B to change from a submersible to a turbine, vertical turbine pump on well number two brand. Is there a second?
No, second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? How you voting for that?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Sure she is.
Yes.
And what I'll do, just sitting here thinking about that, I don't mind, when I say that, you'd have to design it differently, I was going to say, I don't mind bidding it both ways, but that'd be two separate, it'd be two completely different designs, with, with going back with what you have would be a much simpler and a much more cost efficient design. I was going to try to do both, but that, that would not, that won't be, that won't be possible. Not, not the design will be, the, the going to a submersible, you could, but the design of getting to both ends would not be the same.
I'm going to tell you with mine, it may be just a matter of memory, but I don't recall us being asked about that to begin with. I don't know why the submersible would be, we probably had a chance to look at the, et cetera.
Yeah, that's right.
But I don't remember that being at the point of discussion.
I, I came in after it was already funded, when Cliff left, and it may have just been, hey, our well three is a submersible, you know, let's just go with the submersible, we've had no problems with it, and this one may be causing problems, but this one may be 30 years older than the, you know, the, the well three, so I don't know. But, but to get the cost and O and M fees, once they're both in place, I think the vertical turbine is easier and more cost efficient to work on.
And we next table the end of the low budgets. I'd be right here, I'd say we should, we all, yeah.
And with that motion, Lynn and I will discuss with DEO what, you know, what process, if any, I don't think it's going to be a big process to get that swapped with them.
All right.
Thank you, just two, two more updates, I'm getting ready to submit 90% plans for Jackson and Jefferson to D O T, and at the next meeting, I, before that, I can send to Lynn to have printed here at the office for y'all to look at, I mean, I'm at 90% now. I just want to comment back to D O T that I got to address before I can issue those 90% back to them at D O T. And, I mean, everything else is going good, unless there's questions on anything, the projects are, are going smooth. I think we're probably, I would say 60% for the plans for the well, and I just had to get this answered, we could be at 100 in, I would say, two weeks, I mean, we could be close to advertising by the next meeting, I hope to bring in advertisement and approval from you guys to advertise, barring any strange things from DEO, you know, by swapping the grant around a little bit, that we can advertise that one very, very soon.
On the Jefferson and Jackson, I'm seeing the site here being down on the Dollar General, they, they'll work together, I'm sure, that right away in.
Where is, so I don't know anything, but.
It's obviously in the Jefferson, on North Jefferson Street.
Is it right there on the backside of Bust, is it on Bust Rogers at the corner? Okay, okay. I, I did not know that, that, I guess they'll access it off of Jefferson, is that correct?
Then.
Is that very ten?
Bust Rogers.
That's what I was thinking, I, I didn't know how they would finagle it, but if they have both, or if it would be off Bust Rogers, okay. Good deal. Do you know if there will be an access off of Jefferson, there will not be an access road off of Jefferson to Dollar General? Okay.
One, one, one way in, one way out?
Okay, I'll just, if there was, I want to make sure I put that in my plans to get a, you know, to get a driveway, make sure I have it marked, but if there's not, then we're good.
And I'm sure who, who their engineer is, but we got to settle the plans, you're going, if you need to.
I wouldn't mind looking at those.
If they get their plans and I want to do your plans, we got to say here.
I wouldn't mind looking at, even if it's just that one sheet, you take a picture and send it to me, I wouldn't mind looking at it, just to, just to make sure everything checks off.
Okay, you think?
That's it, unless there's any more questions.
You have other questions for John?
Thank you.
The Bust Rogers thing, that's, that's way off.
Yeah, I don't even know if you have an agreement yet, do you know if you received an agreement from DEO on the Bust Rogers Community Center?
No, we haven't. We've got paperwork, all I saw, that was the paperwork saying that had been approved, but.
Yeah, I've got two funded under that same cycle, one here, one of y'all's is one, and then the Grace Field is another one, and neither one of those have gotten anything other than maybe a letter saying, hey, you are funded, but the timeline of when you'll get an agreement even approved, I'm not sure.
You weren't at our recent fund day celebration here, were you?
No, sir.
Did y'all hear the candidate's speech that day, any of you? I may be reading into it, but Mr. Abbott announced it with his build of enclosed and air conditioning, positatus, how much better we want to have ourselves from being on like that. Were you there?
I was there.
Did you hear that? Okay, so we need to make sure that he.
I think.
That's going to be, going to have legislative dates and stuff like that, I'm sure, but we need to make sure that we don't get anyone forget that.
I was going to say, I think we turned in an application to do that two years ago, if I'm not mistaken, maybe even this past cycle, I, I have to go back and look, but I know that's been in the, in the works, so maybe he's going to find some funding for us.
Have we, have we got one in for something there now? Because two, two years ago, we turned in the big one, and we got, we got the facade changes on it. Last year, when we made the legislative delegation, we asked for the second half of that for him.
That's right.
And I don't recall if that included, does that include the air conditioning thing?
Some of it was, because there wasn't HVAC included, but I don't know if that means the whole building, he's talking.
It wasn't.
Yeah, I think he's talking about maybe doing the entire barn, trying to enclose it with air conditioning. And the second part was not to fulfill the whole barn, but maybe that's his route that he wants us to take, and I'm, I'm here for it. I think that would be a very good project.
Make sure, like, that, I mean, with the, with the legislative delegation takes place, we need to make sure we, we ask for it.
That, that should be relatively soon. I mean, that session, you know, starts at the beginning of the year, but they start making the rounds, and that's something we need to definitely put on the top of our list to discuss and get a prop, you know, get an application started.
Could you speak for us in that, if you're?
I can, I can, whatever that is, if you'll let me know a day they're here, I don't mind coming over.
I did know where the, when there was contracting and ethics and things like that, you ordered agents by us to do some work for us, I didn't know if you could.
I'll talk till they tell me to hush.
Speak with us.
I, I'll talk till they tell me to hush, I can, I can, don't mind killing and helping and, and, no, I, I don't think there'll be any conflict there, I don't, I don't mind sitting in, not going to be it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Maybe we'll see you next month?
Yes, sir.
With plans?
Yes, sir, I'll, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then what is that then? Adam Carter?
Okay, the first thing under mine is Marcy had wanted me to approach the council. When she left, according to the personnel policy, she was eligible for her comp time and vacation leave pay, and we did do that. She had quite a bunch of hours for sick time, she wanted me to come back to the council and see if the council would consider paying her for the sick leave. The personnel policy does not accommodate paying for sick time. That she, because she had 70 hours, I think it was around $2,000 worth of money she would receive, she wanted me to come back and ask, and I had invited her to come to the meeting, but I don't know her working hours are now, to see if the council would reconsider that.
She had sick leave come to her, that she didn't need?
She had earned sick leave. I checked with Margaret about what had been done in the past, and she said the first time she left here, that she, the council did pay her 75% because she had so many years of service, but the second time she left, she did not, she had accumulated more sick time, the council did not pay her.
I think we may want to ask Mr. Carter, and that's not in opposition to it, I think we need to ask him because it's not in our policy, I think we have to make a special exception, and that maybe what she's asking us to do is make a motion and do it, and we probably can do that. If we're going to do it, though, we probably need to amend our policy to call for it to happen, but calling, one day you will leave, one day Kim will leave, one day, of course, they've been living here fast enough lately that they didn't have time to. But when we get our, the last policy that I worked on, we did it so that you get all of your annual leave up to 240 hours or something like that, and you sick, or up to 600 hours, oh, yeah, sick leave up to 240 hours. But our attorney was not necessarily pleased with labor, because he said, you're, you're , I'm sorry, he was, he was less favorable about extended leave for funerals, he says it's kind of like with, if you go too deep with that funeral leave, that way you kind of reward somebody because somebody in the family passed away, they get through four days off, they've not seen that cousin in forever, kind of thing. And the sick leave was kind of like that, you got a sick leave as an insurance policy. Sick leave means I don't miss a check if I'm out two weeks or two months, but I leave, that means I keep on getting paid. It's unnecessary benefit, except that if you need it, you got it. But, but I did know that there's places that pays out their sick leave and all, and how much, how many hours does she get out?
I did write it down, I think when I figured out it was around, somewhere between 1,500 and $2,000, I don't, I don't remember, I can go literally, but.
Well, I think we need to ask you first.
Okay.
Normally, if they do pay you a sick leave or something like that, then it will be two, nine, four hours.
It'd be, it'd be, maybe, maybe we did the 75, I don't know, and we called, or some kind of device, maybe if they suppress us, we get the whole other thing, and if we think, when we, secret calls, if we do this now, those nice couple people that left the D P paid, that is, we'll think, come back next month, and next month, and Jim Bull and Tim both, but he later, well, Tim didn't, he, he was sick every time he had a day made, but he, he made some of these days just in time to be saved. But I agree with Carter, do we all agree that maybe Mr. Ian Carter will give us some opinion on that, since it's not in our policy? If you need to answer, just over the grid, give an attorney's opinion that this is not a denial, or just, we're just, you'll have the opinion, is that okay? Were everyone willing to hear and handle that?
Okay. The next thing, and we can talk about under the budget, we had talked last meeting about the fire department Christmas party budget, and I did figure it on the budget sheets that you have when we get ready to do the budget sheets. You remember, last year it was budgeted $2,000, but we, y'all had talked about setting a limit, and the budget that you have in front of you, I set $500, but we can always change that. I did have Kim call around to three places to see what it would cost to cater a party for around 30 people with one meat, two sides, and the highest quote we got was 400. So the lowest we got was 200, and that's just for the meat and the size, it was no silverware, no plates, no drinks, anything, so they placed away between two and four hundred, of course, that's still several months out, I don't know if the prices will go up, so in the budget, I set it at five, and I'll change it whatever y'all want it to be. That's just information, we can talk about during the budget hearing. The next.
Do I got a question? Catering for 30 people, $200, that must be plenty of meat crackers.
We checked pulled pork and then, and two sides, and I thought 200 was a little, too cheap.
You're not getting much for that.
That's pretty inexpensive, yeah. And I think the reason it's been larger before is they want to do it, and at that budget, they've also included gifts and no prizes and things like that. With that budget, I believe that makes sense. You will need to note that before we adopt the budget, but we don't, we don't have to decide tonight, we can think about it or discuss if we can, or we can decide tonight if the council wants to, but we will have to do that before we do our budget.
And it is part of the budget, so I guess by adopting the budget, you would adopt that amount, but you want me to change the amount in the budget?
Okay, so unless we change the 500 on the line item, when we adopt the budget, we adopt that, that part of the line, just like any other budget, okay?
Right. The next thing is I have.
Sound good to me.
500 or come back later?
Come back later.
Come back later? Come back later?
Be fine, yeah.
That's fine, I mean, I think 500 is a good amount.
Yeah. Can we put that on our next agenda? We won't, we won't have any choice, but, well, if you've got a bottom line, we can do that, and if we, if we change it from 500, we just have to take it off some other line, if they're telling.
Right.
Of like that, so.
Right. Increase it.
Give them all this into this, so we can tell you what that, and they need to know we hit a time too, so they'll, what they have to spend.
And then in your, the, on top of the books was your budget for next year. See, I have it balanced at, let me see what it is, $3,209,789. I gave you a breakdown of each category that we have, the state, I also put in there the new state money that we're going to give all of the categories, or the money's down. And so this budget is based on the new figures that I just, we just pulled off this week from the state. And then you can see, say, for instance, in the general fund, the, just the budget summary last year, the revenue sharing, we got, we received $30,505, this year we're getting $23,000 from the state. So altogether, just in this budget, it was a difference of $8,670. And I put the backup to the numbers in the budget for you to look at. All the numbers were down except for the fire department, the fire department's went up some from $36,000 to $50,000 in the fire budget.
But that's county money?
Yes, that's county money.
That could be back in 36 days.
Right. Now, I don't think the counties passed their budget, so these were figures from the fire services.
That's good. That, that should, and maybe we need to talk to the chief, but that one, with $14,000 more in there, that also say to them, and some things that they come up with, to see if they take out a general fund, they've got about $14,000 more that they've been having, they can do, they can do something without any, our budget, our budget is hurt.
I did, I did, you'll see on the summary that I did take the property insurance, because it's so significantly more this time, and divide that 15,000 from the water, 15 from the general budget, and then the five, and 11,500 out of the buyer, because they did get the increase, and the other budgets are down a little bit, but we can work those figures around if y'all want us to. The retirement for employees, it went up just a little bit, there's no raises for employees figured in this budget, because both Philip and Kim will get their dollar hour raise in January of 2025, so I didn't include any raises for anybody in there. Let me see, I don't have.
Only, only narrative, I, we all probably don't, but if this is going to work properly, can you believe, can you imagine, person being just got, just addressed as Debbie Clur, and then you come in and you address two, two people with dollars, which you don't dollars, which you don't, you should, you should type up, you should type up, your system type up.
Okay.
And this one is not at, at an external rate.
Yeah, yours was the only one. Because I was figuring, I was going to put on there that the only spendable money we have is the, is the 417,000, although the bu, budget's at 3 million, a lot of that's grant money, it's just pass through, we're, we can't spend any of that really. And that 417,000 includes the fire budget, which really is earmarked for fire service, really shouldn't be included in our spending money either. So we, we don't have 3,209,000 to spend in our, our general budget. The utilities are up, and we're, and we're expecting an increase for street lights, for the street lights on Highway 77. I don't have those bills yet. I've been talking to the lady at West Ford Electric, but we don't have anything in writing yet on that, so I didn't figure that out. But we've managed to reduce the fuel and the operating expenses about 60% by leaving that truck parked and just cutting down on fuel. The fuel bill has went down significantly, so...
On the, I'm sorry, you, you, you present, you present the way the true, and then we'll go back and ask the question if you need to do that. Okay, on the, the water charges down $20,000, $23,000, is that, is that how much you anticipate us losing on the, on the homes coming off?
Yes, and for that, Kim and I looked at the actual, what we've actually collected from October 1st of this year to this week. So that's basically 11 months. And so we looked at what we actually collected from the customers over the, over the 11 months, and then averaged it out with one more month for 12 months. And so that's where I come up with my proposed revenue for that. The garbage, interesting, the water sales are down, the garbage is up, because we've gotten se, we've got several people that are reading dumpsters now from us.
Wow.
And, but, another thing I wanted to tell you is that we found that 79 customers do not have garbage. 79 of our water customers do not have garbage. I didn't know if the council knew that or not. I found it interesting, but...
You can force them to have it.
Right, right. And so those are people that, of course, I, I, they're not using it, I'm assuming, because they don't pay for it, and they don't have a can that we know about, but...
I'm, I'm not sure to answer your question that we can, I'm not sure that we want to, but I'm not sure we can, because we can make a tech water. That's part of the original thing, and we, if we call that as municipal service, I'm not sure that we can't make a municipal service waters out of, in, they have to do it. You can put down a well, well salt for irrigation, but you...
Can we have the door?
And, and, maybe Mr. Ralph Jones or somebody kind of tried some of that, and, and we stopped short of going to court, or the council at that time did, but I think that you, if you put down a well, or if you had a well and he was using it, it went out, you had to see up on the water, or if you put down a well, you had to pay a minimum worth. I know that that's what, on this last one, it went out. My brother's got a well out there, but future reference, if it went down, he can go house hit the water. He's paying on, he's paying on meter now that don't, and don't use water out there. I don't think he started using water. Has James...
That's his last name.
Hey, yeah. Yep. He, he, he's got a well out there. I think maybe Ronnie uses, did his old well, does he have a meter? Does Ronnie Jean have a meter?
I don't know.
Yeah. But anyway, to answer your question, and if 79, if 79 customers makes a couple thousand dollars a month or more, just before we go over to the council, we'll vote for that.
Last year, the council did the non-hodable sales at 10,000. We never collected that, because we didn't start it, I conservatively put it at 7,500, but by September 1st, we're going to be ready to start charging the, for the water, the non-hodable water out here. Philip, this week, is working on getting some meter out to the road so that we can start. My goal is September 1st to start charging.
And that'd be good.
They're using a lot of water right now.
It'll be all over the work.
No, it never, it never got started.
We talked about it, but it never happened.
Yep. Never, never got started. September 1st, my goal is to get it going.
Have we got a rate for that?
Well, that was another agenda I don't want to talk to you about. That's right after, yeah, that's a couple down. But anyway, this is just a balanced budget. You can look at it, I'll be glad to change whatever the council wants me to change, move the numbers around. We will need to have a, a budget hearing before the next regularly scheduled meeting, because we have to have this approved by October 1st, I believe. We have to have two hearings.
Well, this will have to be a special, a whole meeting, like 10 days after the first one, this was prescribed by law, and we have to advertise it.
Right.
And what we did when we do the budget, we adopt the bottom line, and in the course of the year, the council and the clerk can buy action, do line item transfers, but we can't change the bottom line. If we get out there in January, we've got a whole way coming in, we can't budget that whole way until next year. If we can bank it, we can keep it, and I'm not sure that we can spend it, but we, we can't change the bottom line budget without having, without advertising, having a whole new budget here to end up on the new budget. So we need to, we need to process it now. The line items, if you will, come back at our next meeting or whenever we change, and see if we think any of those are in-line, out-line, if we need to drop sign them. I know we always get the request for project graduation, we get different, different requests, and I'm not sure what that's under, it's in the general fund, I'm not sure what we're talking about.
The general fund?
Uh, Christmas prayer, Christmas prayer, miscellaneous. Is it that, is that, is it miscellaneous?
Yes.
So we will have, we will have a budget graduation or those kinds of things, unless we change the line item, which is, and we don't have a contingency line, they have contingencies. We do have a cash queue forward, and that one can change, because they did the adjusted interest at the first of the year, when it all, so that, that could change. What about the home fire department? We've got two loans there. What are one of those loans for?
Fire department? Fire department one? One is the People's South loan, or 445,55, I don't know what that's, piece of equipment, maybe? And the USDA loan is the loan that was taken out to, by items needed for the new fire station. It's 52,000 or something like that, or 61,200. And the People's South loan, I don't know what else.
There's none, none of that has to do with the generator, really?
No. That generator is under the general budget. That generator was 40,000 the child took out last year, I think it is. It's, it's under the general budget.
Is there anything that we're just paying off?
The, I think the one, given here...
And, and if you want to, the questions we're asking, if you write them back, I don't think they answer necessarily, but I, I would like for you to write them back, what those two loans is for.
Okay.
And if there's anything in the general budget that, that we're responsible for, what they're, what they're for, and how goes for us to pay them off. That's going to be one of the ways that we work our, set up this budget situation is we have to get a little bit more of the idiots, like, play, and you, you worry ourselves about it. I think the only thing that has, that would be... Question, is that one? Just one thing? Anything else on the budget, should we tell us?
So, no, we need to have the next one at least 10 days, you said?
I think 10 days after our first one, we have, we have to do that.
And you'll be going?
To adopt, we have to do that. So, you, you look at this, well, our next meeting is on, what, the?
19th.
19th of September, and 10 days after, 29. So we can do what, we don't have to call two meetings, we can do one that ends with record meeting, and we just have to have one special meeting. And Mr. Carter, the thing we used to do, he's made up, he won't be, he's just experienced.
Check days.
But I, I think it's, and one of them's set, one of them's set by law, it has to be like a 505 or something, it's a time set in the, and we had to advertise it for that particular time, that the school board has to do that at a certain, at a certain, at a set hour. Let's make this as easy as you can. If we look at this, it's balanced. And, and we can change any of these departments if we want to tonight, and move it to another department. We can't change the bottom line on the whole budget, because that's just how much money we'll have. We can change any department tonight, after tonight, or actually, we adopted this, we can only change line items within a department, we can't do for a department that's part of it. We think this is a balanced budget. We can set that first hearing, I think, tonight, to be at our next meeting, we don't have to go through, through motions and things like that.
But we can move, merely, from one department to another, when that changes the bottom line?
No, we can't tonight.
We can't tonight.
But not after tonight, we don't...
After, after tonight, we can only, we can change, like, the fire department can take it off the line, hey, put it on line two, but tonight, we can take that as a fire department, put it in the street department or something like that, without putting up fire department, because that's a county that is, is dislocated. Can we do this? Can we, can we, can we make a motion that we'll have our first regular hearing on the budget, regular meeting on the 19th, provided Mr. Carter, that, that are called Mr. Carter, and that can reset it. If you can always call us, we always have a special meeting. Just have a special meeting for one item, for one motion, and all like that, is asking a lawsuit or something. What do y'all think about that? Ms. Parker, what do you think about that? Ms. Carter?
I agree.
Thank you. If somebody make a motion, then we will set our first hearing at the regular meeting of the 19th, contention for Mr. Carter's approval, who beat the guidelines from which , nobody can do that.
Do we have a motion?
Okay, we have a motion, or second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, so any discussion of motion. Hey, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
She, she is, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
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 The next thing is the animal complaint resolution. You probably remember last month, I brought customer, a couple of people had complained about the chickens. I did send Mr., I forget his name, a letter. Stoper. Stoper, Stoper letter, and he came up to the town hall and said he would love to have the chickens picked up. So I'm going to work on some way to gather the chickens in town. Not sure yet I will do that, but Philip and I are going to try to trap them and see what we can do with them.
We're going to have video. We're going to take video.
I'm going to give them away.
I thought that would have a chicken to build, but sure.
That'd be, that'd be the fire department, for me.
I'm going to give them away. He said he had one of them, it had basically gotten from him, and there were so many now that...
He allayed my heart of...
He could not do anything with them, so I told him. He asked me if we picked them up, would that be resolved? I told him I felt like the council would be fine with that, they just wanted the chickens corralled up, basically, so Philip and I are going to work on that, trying to get them done.
Joe, you need to feel your back, feel, should put them right back here now. No, I'm kidding.
So that situation should be resolved. The next thing is the fire department dunk tank rental. Dunk tank has been rented through the town hall, I don't know the history or the background or whatever, so people call here and they rent it from us, and we write it down on a big counter with the other building rentals. But that fund day, the fire chief approached me and wanted to, the fire department to take it back over. I did miss two rentings, because I did not know it was supposed to be rented. Most of the, everything we do in the town, other than water for the churches, is free. We don't charge them for building use or anything like that. I assumed the dunk tank was the same, I did not know, nobody had told me. So I did miss two rentals, I rented it three times since then, but people did pay, because they brought it to my attention. But they're wanting to take it back over, they said they would keep their own receipt book, and if people give them cash, they would just write them a receipt. So I told them I really wanted to let the council make that decision, because now when they come, they, they write me a check to the town of Walsall, I write it down, and then I keep track of who's renting, where it's, where it's going. It does need some work. The Valley Church borrowed it a couple of weeks ago, and the big thing that you throw the ball at, they said fell off. So they did some temporary welding on it, but it does need some work on it, but it's being rented a lot right now, because it's so hot. Doesn't matter to me either way. How much do you bring it for? It's $50.
I didn't know that.
Um, I didn't, I didn't either.
I, it sounded like we've got two issues there. One is that, and one is people get things free out of, whether they think for our witnesses or charter or anything like that, where we, where we do free things. At one time, and I suppose still is, even Paulson Patterson, so much if you, if you rented, and it was going to make money, so much if it was a certain less and certain less, I may, we may need to go over that again, but I remember one time, and I'm glad to say that you look back doing fund day, like, yeah, but one time, Mr. Carter came, this is 30 years ago, he came because we was charging for the, we was charging community club for the fund day, and we, we said, we'll become a co-sponsor, that way it's a city, it's a city thing, and we don't have to charge. He was asking, you know, this turn back into the city. And, and that's good, but... My opinion is that anybody wants to use it without a cost, they need to come here. You don't need to make that decision.
Yeah, and I don't want to definitely make that decision.
We don't have anything, we don't have anything that gives an individual the authority to make that decision, I don't think. And if Mr. Wolfman often says, that's the opinion of one.
I would love God, that's about the rental division, because people call us all the time, say, I've always used it for free.
The, the second thing that I think is, is the one that you asked us about, really, is the, you know, the, the dunk booth. We just got, we're talking about how bad our budget is. Now, if they want to, if they want to rent it, and not only give us a receipt, give us the money, that's one thing, but, but we need that money, as bad as they, they just got $20,000 added to them by the county. We just got reduced $22,000. I think we're in a little, still come out here, that way to go to the general fund.
Well, somebody's definitely going to have to pay to get some work done on it, because it needs some work done, for sure. Doesn't matter me anyway, just because it was going to be a change of what had always been done, I just wanted the council to make the decision. And I...
Okay, yeah.
When I were talking about it, I said it's fine, maybe we can, just get the people to write a check, and put it in the drop box, and I'll, you know, code it on the books. But they feel like maybe not everybody has a check, and so they just want to be able to keep their own receipt book and keep the receipts for it. I might, well, let me get the clearance of the council before we change and do that.
What, what does the council think? That's just my, my opinion.
Does the dunking booth actually belong to the fire department? I don't know. I've asked...
That dunking booth started out maybe in... That Duncan booth started out maybe in Vernon. And it lay in Mr. Rude's yard for years. I've stayed for the longest time trying to get it back over here with some equipment, things like that, and it's back over here. Then it'll be tagged and titled where that thing anyways. But whatever is over there, a long part of it belongs to the tank. Uh, some of these incorporated departments, they own their equipment. They got titles to their trucks, and that's not that. But this is a city department, so all the liability, the insurance, you you got a budget at the point, you got where that cost center is. But at the bottom, the the end of the day, all of that stuff right here. The trucks belong to us, the building belongs to us, the debt belongs to us.
I'd also like to get a waiver form. Because, you know, the way that dunk tank does, if you hit the thing, it drops it and the whole bench that you sit on falls down in the thing. I just think the town needs some kind of waiver form when you. I'd like a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
May not be worth the paper it's written on, but.
We need to talk to Jeff about that too.
I think that, I'm just saying, if you take this thing off, you're, you know, you're at risk.
And 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 I'm, I think I would call the council, your mother, tired of time when when it was moved here. But when it came from Vernon or Bayberry, it was a chip. I wonder if we look back, is there a reason that that somebody let you go that delivers a liability already? They've already.
I kind of agree with you on it staying and, you know, at least Lynn knows where it's at and who's rented it kind of thing. And I'm not sure we would necessarily be in the loop if just handed it to the fire department. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Wolfson?
That would be mine too, sure would.
Ms. Carter?
I agree with you.
Mr. Carter? Okay. Would you ask, can I just ask her, uh, you open to me? Can we ask her to, uh, you and Philip to look at it and see, uh, what kind of repair it is in? And see if there's something that we want to continue to bring because there might be a liability. And even, I think that form is a good idea.
If it's something that's gonna hurt somebody right now, we don't need to rent it or use it.
Mr. Jerome Halli said one time, he's not here to defend himself, but he said one time, anybody can sue anybody for anything. It just depends on who's got the best lawyer.
I can do that.
Does that hit you?
Mm-hmm.
Are we all good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing that someone asked me about was the water rates. So I found in the minutes in September of twenty twenty-three, the town was, the town did discuss and voted on October first, twenty twenty-three. Or soon after, began dealing three dollars for non-potable water that was vote voted on during the budget. So I've been talking to some of the guys that have been coming out here because I've been going out to see who's actually getting the water, what companies are. Because I'm trying to make me a list of who's using it. And one of the tanks that the guy was on the day, he said he got four thousand gallons. Well, four thousand gallons times three dollars is going to be a lot of money. More they're gonna be able to want to pay. This morning before nine o'clock, there were six trucks that filled up. Before nine o'clock.
I'm with it. Three dollar, three dollar, more than three dollar a gallon.
That's what the minutes said.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
But I'm wondering if it, it should have been three cents a gallon. Three, three cents a gallon, the four thousand gallon truck would be a hundred and twenty dollars. That kind of money for a truck, they're not going, nobody's going to use the water. That's a lot of money. Because right now, they're filling, they're lining, they were lined up this morning down the street to give water.
Possible, possible, possible in future. How much water costs a gallon?
Fifty-four twenty-two or something like that for the first.
Three thousand.
From three thousand.
So three thousand divided by what if you just say it's two cents a gallon or? A hundred and fifty, nine gallons, yeah. See, which one?
About two cents, isn't it?
I wish.
It's about two cents, isn't it?
That's two cents.
About two cents?
It's numbered about about five thousand, not the other one. It's a number by by the gallons.
I'm thinking three cent would probably be a fair amount. Uh.
Point oh one eight, is that a misprint is that?
I I don't know. I I don't know.
I'm like, I remember.
Three dollars is a lot.
Yes. That's fine.
Of course, we can.
At a thousand, at a thousand dollars a tanker. And four, five, ten, they they don't pay through four thousand dollars and make the water. Well, no, I don't have that to need.
That still seems a lot of money.
That's what I thought too, and like, and so I didn't know if it was a misprint. I'm, I, because I really want to start contacting the contractors and giving them a heads up. I want to try to schedule a meeting for them on the country town hall, so this is what they'll do, uh, beginning September first. But I wanted to get that resolved before I did that.
Yeah, you don't have a big one here. How would you say it was? Did you get the written tape already?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Joe was doing it.
Turned in.
Yes, be, uh, uh.
Turned in.
Tell me again, how much do you pay for a gallon?
Oh, uh, fifty-four twenty-two.
Fifty-four twenty-two divided by how many?
Three thousand.
Three thousand? Point oh one eight, about two cents.
Point oh one eight.
About.
About two cent a gallon.
A little under two cents a gallon, what you pay? So to read not be much all the stuff about, but they're going. You gotta divide the number by the gallon.
Yeah, to get a gallon per gallon, yeah. Oh. Two percent because the non potable, so we are not treating it as a number.
Right.
So a thousand gallon will be, uh, three dollars, is that right?
This just said it was three.
Thirty.
Thirty dollars.
Thir- thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars for a thousand, yeah.
That's a little lot, eh? It is, but like you said, I mean, it's a viable resource on those.
That's.
They're gonna pay that anywhere else.
That's the cost.
Or maybe.
They could go to Centee Hills, possibly here and and bring it, they could go to Centee Hills, but that's not that. They got off of Vernon or Chipley or all four, I mean, we're the, we're the closest.
Had three cent a gallon ones that were lined up this one, because there were two that were much bigger than the four thousand gallon. There were like two tankers, but like huge, like gasoline tanker trucks back there. They were very large, but just at the four thousand truck with three cent a gallon, just this morning before nine o'clock, I could have collected a thousand eighty dollars. Or on those larger trucks. First one had to be it all, and then.
Or. Okay, I I don't ever saw that. I do, uh, uh, because before that, they were just getting it.
Right.
At the Ubersol, looking at the asphalt more. Uh-huh. So a thousand gallon tank at three, at three cent a gallon is gonna be thirty dollars for a tanker. Does that sound reasonable? Sounds more reasonable than than three thousand dollars.
Yeah, three, three dollars.
Can we, uh, I don't know if we want to call it a correction to our minute. And and you know, that that may be exactly what we said in three years, but but, uh, going forward, if we fix and put a bid on there, let's let's get it. Against against, can we do that? Do we take three cents a good price at this point in time? We're paying a little bit less for other than that for drinking water, so this is gonna be untreated, et cetera. We do a nickel. It's to them, it's the cost of doing business.
Right.
And with them, if it changes their contract, they're gonna take a change order and go back to the U T and and get a change order. And we don't want to cut over our noses, hide our face once in a while when that dude will be of asphalt, they price just went up twice.
Yeah, we need to do that. Are they giving us real asphalt now?
Nothing's out in here.
We, we have to ask for it, and we probably never got nearly as much people to asphalt as they did war.
I asked for it for fun day, but they they never got back with me. You get it.
What do we think, three cent, four cent?
Three. Three cents is good, you can always raise it. Maybe for you too.
Raise good.
Three cent, yeah, somebody give us a motion.
I'll make a motion that we charge three cent.
Okay. Got a motion, our second.
Second.
In discussion on the motion. Hey, look, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Sure, but she is, Mr. Wolfson?
Yes.
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 Okay. And you know what? Thirty dollars to track the blue, and they would all have it this morning before daylight several times a day. Our budget might look better summer because they're gonna be here for twenty twenty-seven according to land.
How many will keep up with it?
Uh, we're running a meter from the, right now is the well, the, there's a pipe comes out the well, and they they hook like a fire hose on it, and it runs through the fence. But Joe and Philip have been working on, uh, burying a pipe down in the bottom of the ground, so we're putting a meter out on the fence. So that when they drive up, they'll be able to look at the meter. We have a like a contractor thing that you will lift up, there'll be clipboard and all in there. And so they'll list their company name, the beginning meter and the ending meter. I also have one extra camera slot on our security system here. And so Travis Hall specifically gave me the price for another camera to be able to go on it. I can watch, see who they are in in several weeks' worth of data. So if I know there's trucks out there and nobody signed up, I'll be able to back my camera and see who they are. And what, and we can start on a honor system. If they don't do the honor system, then we'll just pull the hose back in the gate, and I'll come get the key from me. I don't want to do that because they're out here before we get to work and after we go to work, and they're here. Marlene Blunt says they're out there seven days a week getting water. So. We'll try it on the honor system and see what happens.
Yeah, so we'll have to identify whether, uh, Mr. Carter got a blue, he got blue, my wife got blue, all of us, et cetera. Uh, I was thinking we'll have these signatures regarding between a thousand, four thousand. I signed for it between four thousand and eight thousand. The next goes, are we gonna invoice hard?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to, we get it, we need to have some hands on on that.
I think it would be fine, these, I mean, it's nothing to these drivers, they're, they're like, they don't really care one way or the other, because they're not paying bills, but.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, I have got something.
All right.
What I would like to do is, uh, see if I can get a farm, uh, being circulate. Since we're gonna pay the middle two streets, maybe we could, uh, draft a letter, send the, send to D O T. Have us get that paid for in this project. And that's just for seventy-seven, that's all in progress, since they're gonna, since we're gonna pay the middle two streets.
We didn't ask him about that a lot ago, we were supposed to manage on those two streets.
We're just, we're, we barely started. They were doing the environmental review right now. We set up the paperwork because we selected Dewberry a couple of months, uh, meetings ago. We sent the paperwork to town house, and we waited until they get it approved. So that's probably two years out.
Ranches, I mean, we get things from one one of them last year, but, uh, from the time I say you're eligible for this, till you even get started. Sometimes it's two or three years, you got to, you got thirty days, and then you got sixty days to respond, and then you got ninety days to respond to response. I say it just takes a time.
I'm just.
But I think that's a good idea.
That's just up to, we don't want to drive on dirt roads and get paid for it. Maybe we'll have our our streets paved by the time they get seventy-seven now.
Yeah, likely. And we had, we did have a, we did have sort of a commitment that if we were going to do those, that the county would pay up to it. And then that's been from the whole, I think, that may be fixing to be turned loose again, and and payments will start back, but. We need to try revenue that we can.
We need to talk to the commissioners. Well, if I think so, we'll talk to them.
Yeah, and I think your, I think your idea is a good one. Would it be all right for you if, uh, if we, uh, included that, that we write to D O T and 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 harbor copy to the county? Let both of them, let both of them know that we need to pay up, they they have that.
Right, yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Is that your motion? Is that a motion, I mean?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion that we contact D O T and and copy the forty county commissions for the request to pay from, uh, Highway seventy-seven to the. Uh, on each driveway overdrive, they'll take it just beyond where it turns off. But, okay, is our second that motion?
Our second.
We have a motion, second, in discussion on the motion. You started last time, and you sure, but she is?
Yes.
Yes.
Number, Ms. Carter?
Yes, Ms. Carter.
Yes.
You think it was her? That's all we have. Good for that bird.
I don't have anything.
Ms. Carter?
Uh, where are we at with, uh, Mr. Register? Did we ever get that settled? Are we still paying him any votes?
We are, he's on my, he's on the top of my list. This is my dilemma. I can't get anybody to give me a clear answer on what the water operator for our town needs to do. So the rural water guy was here yesterday, and he's been trying to help me figure out. Depending on what class your water system is, there's different regulations for different classes. What I'm trying to get my hands on is what, we're a Class C system, I didn't find that out. What the requirements are for a Class C system. Once I get those in my hand, I can figure out exactly what we need, and then I can figure out. I am gonna meet with Mr. Register next week and tell him that our budget's not looking good and see what what items he has that Philip can do. Because I I feel like a lot, some of the stuff that he's doing, Philip can do. I've already, I've already taken back the inline flushing and the valve. You have to exercise your valves every so often. I'm telling Philip can do all that. So I'm gonna get him to sit down and write me out exactly what he does and see which ones I can pull off to Philip. To see if I can talk to him about lowering the agreement we have with him. I couldn't find a contract with, the town never had a contract. Um, and I've asked him about a contract, but, um. That's that's been my problem, is I I don't really know what he, what's to be done.
Well, I know one thing, to me, this is just me, but we've all paid him pretty much money.
Yeah, too much.
I know that.
And I absolutely, I, you know, I wouldn't make that accusation, but probably, uh, couple of races in the last three or four years or so.
Yeah.
And Asper.
Yeah.
Another that we did beat.
Asper number race?
Didn't you ask for a race?
Yeah, one, one, eighteen. I I I've got rural water working me, trying to help him figure that out.
Can they not, can they not contract with us? And of course, he has, anytime that the well gets found, he has to be.
Right. Right.
That's what I had to explore about our coach.
Right.
What does others do?
Well, I call Vernon, of course, they have their own people, and then they have a guy, the guy from Chipley, where's the Chipley Water Plant, that's coming around doing their samples. And, um, so that might be an idea to, like, it could be our samples, but I don't know what else has to be done. He goes three to, he comes checks the wells three days a week, I know that. Um, and then this week, he's pulling samples for something, I don't know exactly what it is, but, um. I guess I've got Justin from Rural Water out there trying to figure out.
Well, when we interviewed Philip, he said he'd be.
Yes.
Well, I doubt that they would go through one hundred.
Yes.
How expensive, how expensive is that student?
It's not expensive at all. You have to work, I think it's, uh, three years under a licensed operator, which is gonna be hard to get, but. Rural Water says there's other ways to do that, that they could help us with, so. And Philip's willing to get the, get the schooling for it, so.
All about, all about paying the weekly, that's what he does for Centee Hills, isn't it?
Yes. And I talked to Randall, I think Randall would be interested. But Randall's like, what is it you want me to do? I said, well, I don't, I don't know yet, I'm trying to figure out what I want him to do.
Looks like Rural Water could help us with that. Who who requires that we have one?
The D E P.
D E P, then then we need to go around Rural Water or D E P and say, why do we have to have one or what do they have to do?
Right.
And if we, they need to have a job search or something like that.
It's it's high on my list, because if I, even if I could get Mr. Register to cut down to a thousand a month at the beginning, that would save us seven hundred a month. That's a significant amount of money by the end of the year.
Yeah, and he charged us to make extra trails, though. Yeah, I mean, it's. I mean, it's just, uh.
Yeah.
I, I hope we can do it.
We can do it.
And, you know, we've always known all of our lives, and things like that, and he went to school, and got a certificate, and he's got, you know, that's the way he makes it live, and then something lost to us, but if I had a doctor's certificate or something, that would probably be better off than I am now.
Yeah, I'm going to talk to him about it next week, I'm just going to tell him that, you know, our budget's down, we're just not going to be able to keep pouring to pay that kind of money every month. Do you think we can work out something?
Anything else, Carter?
No.
I mean, let me do two things. First of all, uh, Ms. Hope, uh, was here last month, and, and I was not sure that I had the right name, I knew that there was a change. If it was Washington News, she'll be covering our meetings from now on, and we welcome you, and, uh, I hope everybody will introduce themselves. And then the thing, if it come up in the meeting, Tim, what about, uh, who's getting water free? My heart, I think everyone would even know my heart, if I wouldn't be wanting anything for free, it'd be the churches, if we can do that, we're doing that. That's good, what, what's, what does anybody get the church for?
The Town Hall, Randall, the Possum Palace. We really don't charge the churches for anything except water. I mean, they, yeah, all have free garbage.
Are they down on water, getting free, that's, that's all kind of, you said, the free shit, not, have a, they're, if they're down on water?
Oh, no, um, like, the wrestlers, wrestlers called last week, and they said, well, you know, we've always been able to do a wrestling thing at the Possum Palace, and we give to charity or something. And then some others, another lady called and says she does a beauty pageant at the Possum Palace for free, and they give fruit baskets to the council and agent or something. And she says she always got it for free. I'm just like, I don't know anything about it.
How much do we charge men at Possum Palace?
Sixty dollars, right? Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
I think if we open the rooms, I haven't had anybody notice this, I've been here, I got a call, Margaret, it's a hundred, they won't use the rooms and stuff, but.
Well, we should, uh, I don't know, two or three years, two or three times for our family unit, and, and I can get this for the same thing, I was getting that, so we can look at it here. It's going to be fifty dollars, but it's seventy-five, I don't, I don't think I ever gave seventy-five.
It's awful stupid.
It was, but anyway, anyway, whatever it is, that, uh, everybody uses, and I know most people that, they can clean behind the table, they can be careful on that. But, uh, insurance, maintenance, if they don't clean it, we have to, they're clean it, or like that. I know the group of abuses here, and, and please thank them for, for breaking down, for, they always do that, but, see, we, we was in here with our head at one time, and we had one branch of our family whose little branches didn't behave themselves like they ought to, and, uh, and have us all, if they wasn't mine, I could have helped out, but they, that's random. We don't, I don't know if we can. If we, I mean, it belongs to the community. Uh, if, if we don't rent, it needs to be worth something to us, if we just want to turn loose and, but, we see, see, we still have to schedule. Somebody's got to come in here and make sure that I don't want it the same bit of John or Judy, or something like that, but they, they, there's work involved for us to do, we need it. What do we want to do?
Well, we're pretty sad on renting the city hall, it's what, fifty dollars?
I think that's, fifty, fifty something, maybe that's a tax or a fee or something.
Yeah, fifty-three.
Fifty-five, yeah. So.
Well, we've got such tight budgets, why don't we just rent it instead of freeze that free loot? Because we do have to keep the maintenance.
Yeah.
For all of it, yeah.
And I'm not sure somebody will come up for some kind of other, we think it's just a good thing for the commission, we would do that, but actually, I personally have a chance to, to make a decision one-on-one, someone would have showers, or they would have, uh, birthday parties, or they would have a, a, we use for reunion, something like that. I, I think we need to charge that, some of these things you're saving, they don't do fundraiser, but they're not going to make money in them sales, we might give them one thing, if they're going to make money, it might be, they used to have, where it used to be. Uh, we had, we fought some, the Fox, was it not the Fox, or the Dog, the Dog舍, the Dog舍, they may pay two hundred dollars, and, and we may pay fifty dollars for a family reunion, but they, they make them money, they end up doing things as commercial.
Well, we used to have our family reunions now, and they would take us places and pay the rent.
Yeah.
You know?
The wrestlers, they have two Saturdays a month from now until the end of the year at the Possum Palace.
How often they have that?
No, they called you, I mean, come rent it, to book it, and I said, well, you know, I.
Oh, they're really, you're going to have to pay.
I'm like, well, you know, we paid some, I'll pay any, I'm like, well, you're going to have to come to the council, I, I don't want to make these decisions.
I think rational is the best.
Because they told everybody to get in there.
Yeah.
You got four months, you got four months from the end of the year, and.
Twice a month.
Twice a month, that's.
That's eight times.
Yeah, that's eight times, even, even fifty dollars, that's four hundred dollars.
I'd say we give it down to fifty dollars.
Okay.
Because it's community thing.
Okay.
You want it affordable.
Okay.
For the Possum Palace, too?
Yeah.
And the Town Hall?
And the Town Hall. Because that's what.
So, everything across the board, or if, if they're going to come in here and, and film a show, or some other thing?
Well, then they got to come to the board. But if it's just for a shower, or a bathroom reunion down at the Possum Palace, fifty dollars.
Okay, that's.
Well, we could do it too, if they want to, they want the chairs, and the bathrooms open, and, I mean, you know.
Down at Possum Palace.
They want the rooms open with air conditioning, I mean, that could be a different price. Whatever you want to do.
I'm not sure why we wouldn't charge more to rent the Town Hall than what we would to Possum Palace. I mean, because it's air conditioned, you know, it's nicer.
Kitchen. See, that's, that's going to be the good thing about the thing that's on the corner, we can send everybody to that. It will be air conditioned, it will have a kitchen, it will have all those things, and, and the city hall will be used for the city hall. If, if, if we decide to do that, that's just, that's just one option, but, so you're saying fifty dollars for everything, or you will distinguish between that and, and commercials, suppose somebody comes in and wants to have a, they're going to have, they can give us fifty dollars for rent at Possum Palace, they can have the biggest yard sale, or Fleet Market, or in Washington, Canada, have twenty-five, we will spend, and we're making twenty-five dollars.
Like a car for a hundred dollars.
I'd be just saying, I think there would be a difference between, if they're going to make money and leave here with it, we all can make money.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, that's right, I mean, that's what we've been paying anyway, right?
We had mine at the store very well for a long time. That information is probably available to us, but, but I haven't, I haven't asked, and, and maybe you have or haven't. But I think if Lynn finds something she doesn't know, and I can ask for it, and Morgan would be so good, she can call her, a year later, she's still telling me that she knows about, nothing on, on, Morgan, except that she lived here, and we didn't know everything, we didn't, we didn't know where she lived, when she, when she left us, and we need to, uh, I don't, I don't want Lynn to do that, I don't. She's good, we have a replacement, others to know, we're the key to the management, we is the least. Okay, so, so Mr. Carter suggested we do, continue to do fifty dollars for things like anniversaries, reunion, and baby showers, birthdays, da-da-da-da-da.
Community stuff.
Community things. And, and for anything that is of a commercial nature, and we're going to let her decide what's commercial, what is it?
Or she practically come to the board.
Or come to the board, okay. Because we're going to let her decide, and I don't want somebody to come up in here and want us to override it or something like that, if she said it's commercial, it's a hundred dollars, and I don't want them to go into, add, we didn't sell that wood, or, so.
Well, that's our value.
Coming, coming to the council is, um, is a good alternative.
I think coming to the council is a good thing.
Yeah, like, uh, renting a building, we get a small percentage of their profit.
Well, that's going to produce inhabitants. See how much, you know, I would just, I like, I like getting percentage of the profit, but who's going, who's going?
Who's going to?
Who's going to always have books, like you were there.
Yeah, that can get complicated.
Okay, building on, do you want to say something?
No.
Which one's that?
No.
Building on what Mr. Carter said then, uh, if they come in here and then says, uh, that's a hundred dollars, and they challenge, that they can come to us, and we'll decide, I would say, okay.
Just like the rest.
If, if they pay a hundred dollars, and they consider it commercial, then sales, and we're good. And another thing that helps with is if people wait till Thursday afternoon, or maybe Saturday, this is going to make people come in ahead of time, and get their name in the booth, and, and things like that.
So, what, we had a call today about, um, motorcycle group want to do a poker run, and they want to stop there for, I guess, refreshments, whatever, so that would be a fifty dollar, right? But that's a, that's a community event, okay, make sure.
They want to just stop running?
They want the bathrooms open.
Oh. Any, 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 yeah. I think they got, coopers out, they actually just want to register that, we do that anyway.
Oh, man, they don't play ball, so.
They don't have balls.
No, ladies won't stop, that's boring.
Use.
They do it every Sunday.
They'll use the facilities, okay. I think, I think, uh, to do what, then they asked for a motion, what you just said, that a hundred dollars for commercial use, fifty dollars for community-oriented uses. Both the Possum Palace and the city hall, the same thing, and that Lynn would make the determination, and all the commercial, would the people have a right to appeal to us? Is that, is that okay? Would you make that a motion, or that is a motion?
I make that a motion.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Since we've discussed it today, I thought already, is there any other discussion, is, are we going to do it with a hundred dollars, and then if that she said, that's the motion, I'm the second, okay?
I, I got the second, yeah.
Okay. We'll start over then, Mr. Wilson, Ham.
Yeah.
Mr. Rambur?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
And Sheriff Bush is? I bet y'all didn't change, and I think I paid up to the end of the year. Actually, I think I probably owe for Mr. Rambur.
I had a chance to get that, but I will, I've been working on this budget all week.
Okay, all right.
I will.
Okay, anything else with the good of the order? Is there a motion, which are?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
No, don't be late.